Thanks. Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the Grace and Trinity Bible Study. I'm John Barton Pastor at Trinity and Associate Pastor at Grace and Pastor Jeannie is a little bit delayed this afternoon, so she had a couple of things going on, but she'll be back for tonight or maybe sometime during today's session. I don't know whether she's gotten it. She had an appointment in Carmel and then something in Muncie, so I don't know when she'll get here, but we are doing the Angels of Christmas. It's a four-week Bible study for during Advent and the full title, The Angels of Christmas: Hearing God's Voice in Advent. And so we're listening for the angels' voices. And last week we talked about the angels, and specifically we talked about the angel Gabriel visiting Zachariah, who was the father of John the Baptist. And this week, our session is entitled, Gabriel and Mary. So again, we'll see the angel Gabriel interacting, but this time with Mary, the father of Jesus, Mary, the father of Jesus, or Mary, the mother of Jesus. And we'll also see a visit of Gabriel to Mary's husband, Joseph, I think, next week. And before we get started, are there any questions about what we talked about last week, or any questions about your reading so far this week?
Do angels have gender?
And I don't believe so. What we know about angels never implies that they have any, any gender. And Jesus, when he was talking about the woman who married all seven brothers and they all died, and then they, she married the next one, and the next one, that one died, and she married the next one, said that angels neither marry nor give birth to children. But that's all we know.
Would the name Gabriel infer male?
Perhaps, the name Michael, or it's kind of a convenient way to make the association for us easier. Because I don't think we have a very good grasp of what a non-gendered being would be. But I know, I mean, if you, if you see pictures, some, especially Renaissance pictures and paintings of angels, sometimes angels are portrayed as women. An interesting question. Any other questions? Well, there is coffee over here. You folks at home are welcome to help yourself to that. And there's also snacks over there. Our sessions will last about an hour, and there is a short video. It's about 10 minutes long. And for you people at home, I'm still unable to get it to play so that you see the video. But you will hear the video, and if you want to see the video, just pick up your book and look on the back of it where the picture of Susan Robb is, because that's all the video shows is her talking. There's nothing else beyond her talking. So if you want to imagine what she looks like as she's talking, you can do that, but. So without any further ado, then let's have prayer and we'll get started. Would you join me in prayer? Gracious Heavenly Father, we're especially grateful during this season to see your plan played out. First through Zachariah and his wife Elizabeth having a child that we would come to know as John the Baptist, and then your angels again visiting Mary and her husband Joseph, and foretelling the coming of the long-awaited Messiah. Lord, we're grateful for your continued work within our world, just as you did almost 2,000 years ago. Lord, we'd ask that you would continue to watch over us and guide us. And as we study your word, that we would draw closer to you, that we would draw, draw a greater understanding of what you have done, why you did it, and how it continues to bless us to this day. For those on our hearts and in our minds with prayer, we lift up the Shelfards at the passing of Tim's grandmother. We lift up Tanya at the passing of the man that she called Father, and all those other concerns that are on our hearts and in our minds. And Lord, we especially lift up Misty, who had a heart transplant at 2:30 this morning, and her, her new heart is beating within her chest. And we also lift up, Lord, the family of the donor, and we're so grateful that you provide such amazing abilities to peo- all people. Lord, watch over us and guide us now. We pray this in the name of our risen Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
That was interesting.
Misty? Who's Misty?
I don't know. I know that we got a prayer request last night for Misty, who was getting a new heart, and she got a new heart surgery started at 2:30 this morning.
Wow. Man of Misty, I don't know her last name, but.
Don't even know what town she's from.
Oh, we don't.
You know the age?
No, no. We know her name is Misty.
Yeah. Mystery, mist.
So we're gonna start today by looking at some of our scripture that we were called upon to read, and so if I can share my screen. And if I can full screen. Slide show. We're just running a little slow today. All right, so our scripture started this week with Luke, chapter 1, verses 26 through 38. And so would anyone like to read some of this as we go along? This is from the New Revised Standard Version, which is what the scripture is in your books.
I agree. "In the sixth month, the angel Gabriel was sent by God to a town in Galilee called Nazareth, to a virgin engaged to a man whose name was Joseph of the house of David. The virgin's name was Mary." Anybody else want to read?
"And he came to her and said, greetings, favored one, the Lord is with you. But she was much perplexed by his words and pondered what sort of greeting this might be. The angel said to her, do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God, and now you will conceive in your womb and bear a son, and you will name him Jesus. He will be great and will be called the Son of the Most High, and the Lord God will give to him the throne of his ancestor David. He will reign over the house of Jacob forever, and of his kingdom there will be no end. Mary said to the angel, how can this be, since I am a virgin? The angel said to her, the Holy Spirit will come upon you, and the power of the Most High will overshadow you. Therefore, the child to be born will be holy. He will be called Son of God. And now your relative Elizabeth, in her old age, has also conceived a son. And this is the sixth month for her, her who was said to be barren. For nothing will be impossible with God. Then Mary said, here am I, the servant of the Lord. Let it be with me according to your word. Then the angel departed from her."
I always want to say the word of God for the people of God after something like that. So what do you think about our scripture this week? Anything jump out at you?
Well, it appears that Gabriel talked to Mary before she conceived. And Elizabeth was already pregnant. But the message that came from Mary must have been quite a surprise.
Yeah.
But yet, unlike some of the other people who, I mean, like I think of Moses, who, you know, not me, get my brother Aaron to do this, or, you know, some of the others that kind of questioned, are you sure? She, she didn't. She just said, here, here I am.
Here I am I, and let it be so, essentially, is how she answered Gabriel coming to her. And June mentioned a little bit before we got started about how in those days, and perhaps not so much in the last 40 or 50 years, but before, even before that, for a young lady to find herself pregnant out of wedlock would be a great stain upon not just her, but the family, and all sorts of names could be hurled at this person, and we don't know why Mary went to see her cousin or aunt, depending on how you interpret the, the Greek, because it could, the words that are used couldn't mean either one, why she went to visit Elizabeth. But it seems like it's almost a blessing for both of them, doesn't it?
Get out of town.
Well, get out of town may be part of it. That may be part of it, you know, it wasn't common for girls to go and take care of their aunt in a distant city when they had a certain illness that was going to cause a swelling in days past. So it may have been just get out of town. But it may have been other, other things, because they both received a message. I mean, when Mary got there to Elizabeth, what happened for Elizabeth?
Well, she kind of knew something was up.
Well, she knew something was up, because the child within her jumped, left with joy. So it was one of those things that was a significant thing to happen for both Elizabeth and for Mary. And so, you know, we, we don't exactly know why, but it was kind of a, an interesting place for them to go to, you know, when we think about ending up in Nazareth, and it's a real small town, and when get to Nazareth, Andrew said, can anything good come, or Nathaniel said, can anything good come out of Nazareth? So it's, it's an interesting thing to happen. We don't know why Mary chose to go there, but we know that she did.
And I thought about it, did she go alone, or did she go with a caravan? Usually they'd go in groups because it's dangerous.
Certainly would have been dangerous for Mary to travel on her own, and who knows the answer to whether Mary traveled alone? We don't know. It's a, it's a good question, and it probably would have been days' travel for her. I mean, because you know how you go, you walk, and so it would be kind of a, a challenge.
There anything?
I always thought she was very young, but according to the reading, she was much younger than even I thought. So for her to have made that trip at, what, 12 or 13 years old on top of everything else, is a lot.
Because it, it would have been very common for her to have been betrothed even before she was old enough to become pregnant. And, you know, Jesus tells a story, a parable about a wedding, and no one knows when the bridegroom's going to come, and it was the same sort of thing. She was betrothed, probably, in an arranged marriage long before her bridegroom was actually going to come for her. And so essentially, in that culture, in that time, a girl would probably be buried and go to live with her husband as soon as she proved that she at least had the capability. I'm, I'm dancing around after her first menstruation, when they show, when she showed that she probably could bear children. So 12, 13, 14 would not have been an uncommon age. And so then again, you hear, she's a very young girl on kind of a long trip. So we don't exactly know why she went, but you know, it seems almost to fit very nicely in God's greater scheme of things, that God, through her journey and arrival with Elizabeth, they both ended up getting a confirmation of who the child was in Mary's womb. And for Elizabeth, everything that she had been told by Gabriel when visited, because the unborn child in her womb recognized the child in Mary's womb. That's pretty amazing.
And who better to understand perhaps what Mary was going through than Elizabeth, because hers was a divine event also, you know, with the angel telling Mary that Elizabeth was also pregnant.
And Elizabeth was also some, somewhat of an outcast, at least the people would not really know how she was an unfulfilled woman in that day. She had never borne a child, and so she would always feel, and you know, some people still feel that way today, that weren't able to have children, still feel that way today, that you know, they're kind of on the outside looking in. And so they're both, in a way, outcasts in their society, not, not full members. And maybe, you know, June said, get out of town. I think that's probably part of it, but maybe another reason that she went was to, kind of along what Rayanna's talking about here, of a common spirit, you know, someone who is going to, through a similar situation. Elizabeth, you know, and we don't know how well she knew Elizabeth, or how often they got together, but she felt comfortable enough to to go to see her, so she may have gone for support.
Especially as young as she was.
Yeah, who would you tell? It'd be all over town.
Well, and there might have been a time there that benefited Joseph as well, so he could adjust to the Jews and figure out what was going, what he was gonna do.
Right. How he was going to handle this, you know, and I think in scripture at one point, we're told that, or at least there's conjecture that he was going to quietly divorce Mary when he found out that she was pregnant. And so he needed a little bit of an intercession. We haven't seen that yet, but he needed a little bit of an intercession in what was going on.
Well, I think the divorce idea came up because the betrothal period was about a year. And I think the reason for that is to prove that she didn't have any relations with anybody else before her husband came along. And that's why Joseph might have been thinking about a divorce. But he came around.
That would save him from shame divorcing.
Is there anything significant about the six month? It's mentioned twice. One's about a year and one's about the pregnancy.
I don't, I don't know that there is other than.
It'd be evident by then, six months.
It, it'd certainly be evident that Elizabeth was pregnant, but I don't know of any, any special significance other than that, and I mean, it, it it would make, in a way, John would be of a higher place than Jesus, because he was older, and so they're talked about as being cousins, so but so when he defers to Jesus, it would make that even more important, that he was deferring to the younger. How do you think spending several months with each other would have helped Mary and Elizabeth experience God's presence more fully in their lives? I think for Elizabeth, she'd just about have to be ecstatic the whole time.
Of what?
She'd have to be ecstatic, happy, joyous.
Oh, okay.
You know, because, you know, she, she never imagined that this would come to be, and now it has come to be. And with an unexpected pregnancy, and perhaps for Mary, it a year before the angel came, she probably would have considered this to be a very unwanted pregnancy. But now she, I think that they, they could just help each other a lot. You know, they, they could talk about the experience of the angel coming to them, and what the angel had said, and then how it seems to be being lived out by the reactions that they had to, to Mary's pregnancy, and you know, I'm
And that last three months would have been preparation for the birth of the child, so I'm sure it was helpful to Elizabeth to have Mary there to help with that.
Right, and you know, they just help her with the physical, everyday-to-day lives. I mean, I mean, our infant mortality rate isn't near as high as it would have been back then, and to have someone else who could help during those three months, so didn't have as much of the physical exertion necessary, you know, from that standpoint, would have been helpful, too.
Well, both of them could talk about why me?
And they could both ponder what was happening with Zachariah. What'd you do, Zachariah? How come you can't talk? And then here's, here's Mary. Mary asked a question, but and that's something that we're, we're gonna talk about, but it seems like Mary did almost the same thing that Zachariah did, doesn't it? He kind, Zachariah questioned Gabriel, and then Gabriel said, well, because, because you questioned me, you won't be able to talk for a while, until the child is born. And Mary asked a similar question, how is it different?
But it was a legitimate question, because she had not been with a man.
Right. So I think that's the difference. It was a, look, Mary understood where children came from, and she knew that she had not known a man. So because she had not known a man, it was a more legitimate, well, how can this come about? I haven't laid with a man. How is this gonna happen? And so Gabriel provides her with the answer, that it's going to be begotten by the Holy Spirit. So.
It can be a good thing to births of Son of God. It could be a bad thing.
Well, and that's something that they both could talk about, because they both are bearing a child, just like Hannah did when she bore Samuel, all those years ago, and she knew that her child was destined to be in God's service. And here, each of these ladies had an angel come and tell her that this child would be in the service of God. And, you know, we, we talk, we're gonna talk a little bit more about Mary and her pondering about her son. We saw that her question that in the temple, when they found Jesus in the temple when he was 12 years old, and Mary went away pondering all these things. We'll, we'll talk more about that, maybe why she pondered those, because of some of the explanations that Reverend Robb provides about Jesus. But I think before we go too much further, we'll go ahead and watch our video. It's about 10 minutes long. And for you, you at home, you'll have a fine opportunity to listen to the video. And so I'm gonna go ahead and start the video, and Pastor Jeannie is not here to, she's not keeping me out of trouble. We haven't sang our song yet.
When the angel Gabriel has left Zachariah, Elizabeth is now in her six-month pregnancy, but that is where the story of Mary comes, and the angel Gabriel. So Gabriel comes to Mary in the sixth month, it says. And let's talk a little bit about who Mary is first. Mary, of course, is a peasant living in this really small village of Nazareth. Nazareth probably only had a number of, 400 people in it. And before Gabriel comes to her, she's probably much of an unknown. She lives in this small town. And just like Zachariah, she's probably just going about her daily business, but hers wasn't as glamorous as his. She's probably, maybe she's, you know, darning her brother's or her father's clothing, or maybe she's walking digits, or perhaps he's drawing water from a well, which is what the Catholic tradition says she was doing. Sometimes medieval or Renaissance paintings show that Mary is in her bedroom, or maybe she's out in the garden. Whatever it is, Mary is just going about her daily life in her provincial little town. And suddenly, the angel, the angel Gabriel appears to her and says, greetings, favored one, the Lord is with you. And can you imagine how, what this must have been like for Mary? And she, she said, the scripture said, Mary is much perplexed by the angel's greeting. Wouldn't you be, be perplexed if an angel showed up in your room, or when you were out doing your chores? Greetings, favored one, the Lord is with you. Mary is perplexed. Some of the translations of that say that she is a little afraid. And so the angel says to her, what the angel says to Zachariah, don't be afraid, do not be afraid. And then the angel goes on to tell her that she is going to have a baby. Well, of course, Mary is engaged to Joseph, and it's, the scripture says that she is a virgin engaged to Joseph, who is the house of David. And so Mary is much perplexed by this, when the angel says, you're going to have a son, and you are going to name him Jesus. He's gonna be the Son of the Most High. And she is much perplexed, and she says, well, how can this be, since I'm a virgin? And the meaning of that word are really, it means, since I have not known a man, I've hadn't had a relationship with a man. Maybe that she is going to have this son who will be a descendant of David after she and Joseph are married. But she's thinking, maybe she's thinking, but if this is supposed to happen today, there's a problem, because we're not married yet, and I have not known a man. And so Gabriel says to her, you will become, the Holy Spirit will come upon you, will be overshadowed by the Most High, and you will conceive in your womb, and that child will be holy. That child will be the Son of the Most High. So this child is not going to be any normal child. This child is going to be of divine origin. And Mary ponders, and it's And Mary ponders and it's amazing to me. That she, after she thinks about the consequences of this, this is a huge step. The angel is really asking her if she is willing to take on this role and without hesitating. Mary says, here am I, the servant of the Lord. Let it be with me according to your word. Mary's response to Gabriel, how can this be? Is is really similar to what Zachariah says to Gabriel. He says, Zachariah says, how will I know this is so? It's a it's a statement of of doubt. Mary's, on the other hand, when she says, how can this be? Since I am a virgin, um, is not really a statement of doubt. She's not asking for a sign. Like like Zachariah did, but this question was very similar. We may be thinking, is Mary gonna get struck mute next? But she doesn't hurt, she just wants a little clarification. And so the angel tells her how this is going to take place. In my own life, there are like two ways of looking at this statement of how can this be? One time. I remember our senior minister came to me and say, hey, you know, we're. About to do some transition here at the church and I would like you to step into the role. As we're planning my succession, I'd like you to step into the role of executive minister. And I didn't say it quite this way, but I was thinking, how can this be? What I said was, what are you thinking? Why, why would you want me in that role? Because if I was gonna choose someone for that role, I would do, I would choose someone who was a second career theologian, but their first career. Was in the business world as a CEO or CFO. And everybody was saying to me, but that's not what I want or what I need. I have business people. I want somebody who's gonna be a pastor to the pastor, somebody. Pastor to the pastors, somebody who's going to um, to bring a different level of spirituality to the staff. Someone who's gonna be kind and caring, but also have to make some tough decisions because it's a hard job. And I said. I'm okay, yes, basically I said. Here I am. I can do that, uh, with God's help, I can do that. Sometimes we say, how can this be because we're called a role that. Like Mary, she may not have felt adequate to step into the to the role that she's been called into. But sometimes I think we say, how can this be out of shock or disbelief or grief that something has happened several years ago? Dear cousin of mine, who's really like a sister to me, um, died tragically in a car accident. And I remember thinking, I thought, how can this be? I just spoke with her yesterday. And we were making plans for what we were gonna do in a few weeks. How can this be? This shouldn't have happened. I think sometimes. I think the space to say and think about how can this be gives us time to think about. Uh, not only how we're going to approach whatever it is that God has called us to do. But to know as Mary did, when when Gabriel said to her, greetings, favored one, God is with you. That sometimes in those how can this be moments, we can realize along with Mary. That God is with us, no matter what is happening in our lives. And that will carry us through some of those how can this be moments. The last thing that Gabriel says to Mary before he leaves her. Um, is words of offering her a sign. She doesn't ask for a sign, but he offers her one as he did Zachariah. He says, and now your relative Elizabeth is in her sixth month. She who is thought to be there is going to have a baby. Because nothing is impossible with God, right? So Mary says that Mary goes with haste to see her cousin and I think our, we don't know if it's her cousin, could be her aunt. But Mary goes to see Elizabeth and I think that this is one of the most beautiful scenes in the entire Bible. Mary goes to Elizabeth's home. And as she crosses the threshold. Before she could even say her words of greeting to Elizabeth. The baby in Elizabeth's womb leaps for joy and she and she has this knowledge, this immediate knowledge. That Elizabeth is carrying a child also and that that child is her Lord. And she, they have this tender moment, we find are these two women who are in the same or similar circumstances. Who have come together in this moment, in this time of of encouragement and support for one another. And they have this beautiful sense in this time of waiting together. And in their encounter with one another. What we find is that they are emblematic. Of Israel who is waiting for their hope. They are waiting for the promise that God has given them, for what has been planted within them. To grow into what God has promised. And that is really. What? Life is about an event. We too are waiting. For what God has promised, for what has been planted within us, that we too might give birth. And find a place of nurture and offer a womb for God to be born into the world.
What went to sleep? Like something I did. Something went to sleep. Alright, so we were talking about Mary and Elizabeth and their visit together and she talks. In the book, she talks a lot about. That she talks about the idea of finding favor with God on page thirty and. Uh, I'd like to go clear up to, uh. Page thirty-four. And. She's going through, the author is going through some of the things that Gabriel has promised or. Talked about how what Mary's child's name would be, and the first is you will name him Jesus. And Jesus is the Greek version of the Hebrew word Yahshua. And, uh. It's just. Another form of Joshua and Joshua means God saves. So the angel Gabriel tells Mary to name him. Joshua. God saves because Jesus will be the Savior of his people. And then secondly, he will call be called son of the Most High and. Also sometimes called son of God, was used in the Hebrew scriptures to describe certain kings like Solomon. And then goes on a little bit further right below there and it says. The Hebrew word Elian is translated Most High and L Elian means Most High God. And so. In those phrases, uh, we see. Who Jesus is going to be. And, uh, called the son of God and this doesn't necessarily mean. That it is the actual son of God. Because they called kings that sometimes. But in Jesus' case, he is actually going to be the Most High Son of God. The actual son of God, so you know, we. Three or four times in the New Testament, Mary ponders this Jesus that is her son. And one of those times is after he's been teaching in the temple when he's twelve years old. And she's, I don't really understand what's going on and you think, well. Come on, Gabriel told you. He was going to be the son of God, but that could be, uh. Actually be the son of God, or it could be like the king, someone who was dedicated to the service of God. But wasn't actually the son of God. So maybe it, maybe we should give Mary a little bit of a break because. She's still learning about who her son is all the way through. Yay, it's Pastor Jeanie, she can keep me on track instead of me getting lost.
Oh, my gosh, oh, a bunch of kids out there. Door open, I thought, forget out of here.
And then she says, or the author goes on, how can this be? And she puts it. Uh, that's Mary's question, but on page thirty-five, the author says, nothing is impossible with God. Have you ever experienced something like that in your lives where? Something you didn't think could possibly happen, happened? And there was no way that it could have happened. From our own understanding. I mean, for Mary, we could see how she could. Might think that because she, as she told us, she had never. Known a man, had no relationship with a man, and yet here she's pregnant. I know if Ron Storms were here, he would tell us a story. He could tell us a story about, uh, in his old life where. You know, the doctors gave him a few months to live and that was decades ago.
Get your affairs in order.
Yeah, that's. That was the phrase that the doctor told him, get your affairs in order. So does anybody else have any stories in their lives where? You would say God intervened?
I do. My son, when he was twelve. Had a bicycle accident and was unconscious for sixty days.
How long?
Sixty-six days.
Sixty-six days.
And I went to the chapel every day and prayed. And he woke up, but he was a basket case. He, it was like a stroke patient. And he had to learn to walk and talk and everything all over again.
Is he still with us?
No. He passed away when he was forty-six, so. He had other health issues.
From twelve to forty-six, so.
Yes.
That's pretty amazing.
But so as we start talking about angels last week too, then. I remember the story in Henryville when they had, there were three or four more tornadoes that came through there, major tornadoes. And we were down in Hanover at the time. And we talked, we went down to try to help people. And, um, one of the, uh, people said, well, I was, you know, there and. And somebody came and said, well, you need to go to the church and go in the basement of the church. You know, that's gonna be safe. So he went to the basement of the church and then he tried to find that person. Person wasn't here. And we had a time, we were driving down to a general conference. And, um, I was driving at night with another pastor in Sandy. And this big truck was coming and the lane was closing off. And I'm like, oh, what am I gonna do? I can't, you know, and there was no room on the side to get off or anything. And then we were okay and. And the pastor woke up, he's like, yeah, I knew we were okay. I didn't. I wasn't sure that we weren't gonna be hit and killed, really. And, uh, because I don't know, I can't go anywhere, right? And I feel like now it's like God had to intervene in that, so.
What do you think about Mary's response? Anybody remember being a teen, being a teenager? If you had a visit like an angel, from an angel like that? What would your response have been? Can you imagine? I I I don't think any of us can actually say what our response would be.
Be in shock.
Yeah.
Scared.
Yeah, yeah, scared, shocked.
What a blessing to be married, but then to know that you're gonna have a baby before, or you don't. You're pregnant before and that it wasn't. Your moral mistake, um. And and know that it's gonna be the Savior. I mean, it would explain all that, that's. It's gonna be the Messiah, you know, so that blessing.
You know, how long have they had been waiting for the Messiah and then? For Mary, she's sitting there, who am I to be? Who am I to break? For God to use me in such a way?
Well, you know, John, in the book, it talked about why Mary was the favored one. Maybe she was the favored one because God knew. What was in her heart and that she would not back down from that responsibility.
Yeah. Yeah, and I I I thought that section was kind of interesting when they were talking about. That because, uh. I get, I don't remember what page that's on. Where it talks about different, uh. Traditions see the virgin birth differently that. Mary was considered to be perpetually a virgin, so she never lost her virginity. And that. The ones that, uh, are called Jesus' brother were Joseph's children from another marriage. And that's one of those things that is conjecture because there's no evidence of that one way or the other. Or the other thing that they think would marry is favored is because she's humble. And she will accept. What God has called her to do. And she doesn't need. Status and she knows that this is going to be a hardship. But even so, she says, here I am, let it be so. And so, you know, she is. I mean, there were probably lots of teenage girls around. And God chose her. And if God chose her because of her humbleness, that kind of matches almost the entire teaching in the Gospels. Calling us to humble ourselves before God, to put God first. To listen for his call in our lives and to follow that call when he does. You know, I, I, there's. It's a parable, I would say, when Jesus gives three examples of people that. Can't answer the call when God calls and one, one fellow says, well, I have to go bury my father. And the language that's used probably indicates that his father may still be alive. But he's getting up there in years and so he's going to have to hang around for a while until his father passes. And others say, well, I'll go after I do this. And I'll go after I do that. And anybody ever answered God's call in your life in that way? Or think, oh, I'll I'll get around to that. I I imagine we all have delayed God's call. I mean, you read the. Jonah and you you see someone who, he had other reasons than because he was busy, he didn't want God to save. The Nenovites, but. Ever had something in your life where you chose to delay your answer to God? Mary didn't.
I I tried to. Give suggestions before I even got a call. I I have joked over the years that I I remember specifically, and I don't know why, but I remember saying, please, God, don't send me to Africa. And so he sent me to Hartford City. And I don't, I don't know what I. Part of it, I've always had problems learning foreign language that it just doesn't stick. So part of it. You know, I remember I didn't, you know, I I would hope that he didn't send me anywhere where they spoke a different language.
So you kind of, uh. You were kind of a Moses.
Oh, yeah.
I'm slow of speed, especially in that foreign language.
That's exactly who I have always kind of. sided with on that kind of point.
Been to Africa since?
No.
Well.
Most of them speak five languages and one of them's English. They know their tribal language, their country language.
And I don't remember, I don't, and it might have been, you know, like a lot of missionaries were being. Hurt, killed at that time, that that might have had something to do with it too. I don't really remember of the whys. I just remember that. So I ended up here.
Well, we're gonna share a couple more things and then we're gonna close with a song. Because I forgot beforehand.
I mean, you're just waiting for me to sing.
Or we're just gonna let Larry sing. Oh, okay. Thank you, yes, we do.
Alright. Mary ends up responding to God with a song of praise called the Magnificat. And so. Can we read this together, do you think? can we read this together, do you think? And Mary said, "My soul magnifies the Lord and my spirit rejoices in God, my Savior, for he has looked with favor on the loneliness of his servant. Surely for now on and all generations will call me blessed, for the mighty one has done great things for me and holy is his name. His mercy is for those who fear him from generation to generation. He has shown strength with his arm, he has gathered the crowd in the thoughts of their hearts. He has brought down the powerful from their thrones and lifted up the lonely. He has healed the hungry with good things and sent the rich away empty. He has helped his servant Israel in remembrance of his mercy, according to the promise he made to our ancestors, to Abraham and to his descendants forever. And then Mary remained with her for about three months and then returned to her home." So Mary was humble all the way through. And she made a point of mentioning that some people who thought they were favored were not really favored. The rich who would have expected, and in that time, when you were rich, they took that as a sign of God's blessing on you. But in fact, God chose to bless the humble who are willing to put his will first. We're gonna have a closing prayer now, and I hope that some of you from Grace recognize this and where it came from. Cause when Pastor Ron was here, he had cards printed up and he gave this prayer to all of you. And you'll, you can get any piece of candy in the dish over there that you want as a reward. If you can tell who wrote, tell me who wrote this prayer. Okay? Let's pray together. Dear God, I am no longer my own but Thy. Put me to what Thou wilt, rank me with what Thou wilt. Put me to doing, put me to suffering, let me be employed by Thee or laid aside for Thee. Exalted for Thee or brought low for Thee. I am no longer my own but Thy. Put me to what Thou wilt, rank me with whom Thou wilt. Put me to doing, put me to suffering, let me be employed by Thee or laid aside for Thee. Exalted for Thee or brought low for Thee. Let me be full, let me be empty, let me have all things, let me have nothing. I freely and heartily deal all things to Thy pleasure and disposal. And now, O glorious and blessed God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, Thou art Mine and I am Thy. So be it. And the covenant which I have made on earth will be ratified in heaven. Amen.
Jay Wesley?
John Wesley. This is his covenant prayer. And so Pastor Ron gave us cards and that was on. Anybody know where your card is? Oh my.
Was this a class like Tuesday night?
It was not a class. They were on the back in church, just little business cards.
Probably did see it.
Mine's taped to the inside of my medicine cabinet. So when I open my medicine cabinet, I see it every day.
And we frequently start the new year with that covenant, the Wesleyan covenant prayer and say, so you would probably hear it again.
And you'll be one step up on everybody else. And since old John prayed for us, we're not going to have another prayer, but we are going to have our closing song. So we just have this dot.
Not to sing a song over John.
Oh, you don't like that. And one other thing to put Pastor Genie on the spot, Larry asked a question at the beginning. And, uh, his question was, were angels male and female? Do they have a gender? And I told him not that we know of.
Their names, you know, are male in our language, but I don't know.
Right.
So, uh, prayers, um, Rita sent, why she's not here, she had severe abdominal pain and went to the doctor yesterday and has a bacterial infection, an infection in the GI tract. We both gave blood on Monday. I too have abdominal pain.
No.
I don't know why giving blood would do that, but that's not a coincidence that we both have. So I had it yesterday and sorry. So, and then, um, I went to the hospital, Tanya, um, what she calls her dad, a, a friend of hers, uh, she said is dying, so appreciate, her name is Dennis, so. Appreciate for that too. And then I don't know if you ever talked about Don Beal, David Beal's son, Dan died as well. And that visitation's, you know, tomorrow. So David's been coming.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, David's been coming to Grace, so.
Is that Ann Beal's husband?
Husband.
So.
Ex.
Yeah.
Ex-husband.
Ex-husband. So, and he's married to another woman. I got to meet her at the nursing house.
And Anne's son was in church Sunday.
Yes.
Yeah, David, yeah.
David.
He sits in the very back. He sits in the very back.
Yeah, I saw him standing up, but.
So appreciate prayers for all those.
Do you know who Misty was that, Missy, that we?
Missy? Do you know anything about Missy?
Misty.
Misty. Had heart transplant.
That came through one of our.
Oh, did it?
Our.
Okay. So you wouldn't know about her, okay?
Little mystery.
Yeah.
Misty Hudson. We just got a name, so no idea how close, but had a heart transplant at two thirty this morning.
And I'm still learning names, so sometimes I have to really like think.
You know.
Where are they sitting?
They're all related.
So. All right, well, next we will do session three.
And, or, you said one hour? Oh, I thought I heard two thirty to four.
No, you didn't hear that.
Just one hour.
Yeah. It went a little over last week. Well, thank you, Rayanne and Larry and Pastor Genie, the song was beautiful.
And, um, before you leave, did you wanna talk about this thing that we're having sixteen?
That books faith and fellowship. So it's a ministry for adults with special needs.
John, I'm taking my gifts for, that we got for the kids.
So I'm gonna be church shares from five to seven.
Is there any place special you would like me to put them?
We plan on doing it once.
You can just put them in the boardroom and I'll move them when I can.
And, uh, do we have a plan for meals?
Not yet.
So we'll have to have that.
We're also gonna have a plan for meals for Hope House, so. What's the cook for what? So you're doing that for Hope House?